Okay, time being seven o'clock, I'll call on Monday, March 22nd, 2001. Meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I'll first read the remote. Notice pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law chat. General law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020. Order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options.
It's Carl. Are you on? Question mark?
In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of this meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Been saying that for a year now. Looks like we're going to be going for a while longer. How first do a roll call of active members here on this call. My name's Richard Escholus. Norman?
Norman LeBlanc.
Jeff?
Jeff Stafford.
Craig? Craig Roemberg. Roger?
Mr. McCarthy.
Okay, we have two apps tonight. First. Agenda item, we have plans not requiring subdivision approval. We have one. I'll turn that over to that subcommittee chairman, Jeff Stafford.
Thank you. The applicant is Jennifer L. Nielsen, trustee of the Minnott Family Trust. The mailing address for her is 15 Kings Brook Way, Northeastern Massachusetts. The property information is assessors map 33B parcel A3, zoning district is R3, and the address is located on the Westerly side of Camp Hill Drive. The proposed number of lots is two. So what they're looking to do, I believe, is lot number 10 is going to be added on to parcel A and lot number 12 is going to be added on to parcel B. There was a note that there were three things missing from this plan. One was the septic, the sightlines, and also the upland information. It does note on the plan that neither one of these parcels are buildable lots also.
Attempt is to extend both those lots as far as their.
Yeah.
Their area.
Yeah.
And there's an existing barn on one of them, so must have been part of one of those lots to begin with. Ways away, whatever. I'd say those three things, even though we are trying to state that it wasn't complete, probably are not applicable to the fact that these are going to be done.
Buildable.
Likeable buildable lots and classified as parcels.
Yep. I mean, that's why, like I said, the sightlines haven't changed for the frontage or anything like that. Basically adding on to the.
The rear.
Yeah, the rear of the property.
I second what Rich just said.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve this as a plan not requiring subdivision approval.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. I vote aye. Richard?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Craig? Roger?
Aye.
Okay. Motion. Okay, we didn't hear you.
He's muted.
How about a thumbs up?
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Motion. Good luck, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Richard.
All right. Time being 7:05, we have a public hearing. Stafford Street, map 01 parcel A, 03.01. Application for a special permit, site plan approval, stormwater management and land disturbance permit. Applicant Hydro Cutter Incorporated. Okay, I'll first read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of Oxford zoning by law, chapter five, table two, uses in a commercial district and chapter 15, projects requiring review and the Oxford general bylaws, chapter 66 and 67, land disturbance and stormwater management. The planning board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom application on Monday, March 22nd, 2021 at 7:05 PM on a special permit, site plan review and approval, stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit. Application submitted by Hydro Cutter Incorporated to allow for the construction of a self-storage facility with associated parking, site work, drainage, storm, water management on property located at Stafford Street, North Oxford, Massachusetts, and the general business zoning district. Owned by the applicant by a deed recorded in Worcester District Registry of Deeds Book 55373, page 366, and shown on assessors map 01 parcel A, 03.01. The application of plans may be reviewed upon the request of the town clerk or in the. Or the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should attend the Zoom meeting today. Okay, and I do have some correspondence that got put into the file. Several of them are from the developers engineer who basically hope to a butters and one of them being Lori Wise. And he said, Tom, thank you for taking the time to come over and talk with Brian and I about your plans for self-storage units. We appreciate you showing us the plans and process of the build. We are in favor of going forward with your plans and best of luck. And one more from Sean Gillis. Tom, thank you for showing me the plans for the proposed self-storage facility across the street from my property. Accordingly, I received the Oxford Planning Board public hearing notice for the meeting on Monday, March 22nd, 2021. Just wanted to say good luck and you have my support. I appreciate you touching base with the butters. And we got some information on March 19th, the planning board from Jared Duvall, DPW director, and Peter Gerhardt, DPW project manager. And they say, based on review of the above documents, which were the proposed plans, stormwater report, everything, we are pleased to offer the following comments. One, we have no comments with respect to proponents' application for the special permit. Two, the DPW strongly advises the applicant to consider paving the area adjacent to the third lower storage buildings. The DPW is concerned about water quality for this from the stormwater attenuated on the proposed gravel surface that may contain significant sediment that could impede the function of the proposed infiltration basin if the catch basins are not properly maintained and sediment forbays are not properly sized or maintained. Three, confirm area basis for forbay sizing, including gravel surface. Four, access to maintain sediment forbay and infiltration basis shall be provided from within the property, not from Stafford Street as proposed. Five, provide BMPs for attenuation and pretreatment of stormwater on the paved surfaces adjacent to the upper building, particularly to capture stormwater before entering the town's right-of-way. Six, the project proposes grading earthwork within towns right-of-way on Stafford Street for the proposed swell. The applicant must make every effort to keep grading and earthwork within their property limits. Seven, the DPW recommends that no excavation occur within the drip line of trees within the town right-of-way, as it may compromise tree health and structural integrity. Eight, notes, town trees shall be removed to facilitate the proposed work unless otherwise approved by the board and tree ward. Nine, should excavation need to occur within the towns right-of-way, a trench right-of-way permit application shall be filed with DPW prior to the start of work, at which time specific conditions may be imposed to ensure no harm is done to town property and the area is restored to the condition acceptable to the town. Ten, proposed retaining walls shall be designed by a Massachusetts registered professional engineer and stamp plans provided to the town for review. Eleven, the applicant shall provide erosion control between the stockpile and the road and show it on the plans. And in parentheses, sheet three. Twelve, the proposed anti-tracking pad shall include a low point before the gutter to attenuate sediment before entering the road. Thirteen, the silk fence shall be provided at the limit of the grading between the upper office building and Stafford Street. Do not hesitate to contact the office if you have any concerns. And we just got our third-party review in this evening from Graves Engineering. And it says, dear board members, we received the following documents on March 4th, 2021, and it's the plan dated February 15th. And a bound document titled, "The Stormwater Reports, Stafford Street, Oxford, Mass." Graves Engineering has been requested to review and comment on the plans and supporting documents conformance with the Oxford zoning bylaw amended through October 7th, 2020. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass. TEP, Stormwater Handbook, Town of Oxford, Chapter 66, Section 7, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance, Town of Oxford, Chapter 67, Section 7, Stormwater Management Plan, and Chapter 8, Operation and Maintenance Plan and Standard Engineering Practices. As part of the reviewed GIE, performed a reconnaissance site visit on March 18th, 2021. The Oxford zoning bylaw, one, the plans need to provide the dimensions and bearings of property boundaries. These may have been included on an existing conditions plan, which GDI, GEI did not receive. Two, the key plan on the top of second page three shows, needs to show the buildings and the curb cuts for vehicle access within 500 feet of the exterior boundary of the lot. Three, the plans need to show the location of existing and proposed tree lines and address screening, lighting, landscaping to integrate the proposed storage facility into the existing landscape. Four, the applicant should address how solid waste disposal will be managed and exterior dumpster is not proposed. Under stormwater management and land disturbance. Five, construction sequencing, phasing needs to be identified on the plans. Six, considering the extent of the proposed earthwork and existing topography, the project should not rely solely on the perimeter erosion control barriers. Intermediate erosion control BMPs, i.e. e.g., straw, wattles, burms of stump grindings, temporary sedimentation basin shall be utilized until temporary or permanent soil stabilization is achieved. GEI would not be opposed to the intermediate BMPs being relocated, redeployed as construction progressive progress occurs. Also, the plans need to provide erosion control measures around the temporary material stockpile. Seven, the plans, perhaps section sheet three, need to include a statement that interim or permanent stabilization measures shall be instituted as soon as practical, but no more than 14 days after construction activity has temporarily or permanently ceased on that portion of the site. Eight, earth cuts and fills to approximately 15 feet deep are proposed. GEI defers to the planning board whether the board would like an estimate on the volume of earth to be removed. Under stormwater management. Nine, GEI has no issues relative to the compliance with Oxford, with Town of Oxford, Chapter 67 requirements, except as noted between below in comments 13 through 16. Hydrology computations and Mass. TEP Stormwater Management. Ten, GEI reviewed the hydrology computations and found them to be in order, except as noted in the following comment. Eleven, the rim elevation on of the outlet control structure needs to be coordinated needing made it among the section view and the oblique view in the construction detail on sheet five in the post-development hydrology computations. Twelve, GEI has no issues relative to the compliance with the Mass. TEP stormwater standards, provided that the following four comments are addressed. The hydrology computations show decreases in runoff volumes to be isolated to the isolated depression in the easily property line of 31%, 8% and .02% during the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storm events, respectively. The hydrology computations also show decreases in peak runoff rates. Thirteen, the interior slopes of the proposed filtration basin need to be three to one. Fourteen, earth cuts of six to 11 feet deep are proposed to construct an infiltration basin. And the lowest opening in the outlet control structure that will regularly discharge stormwater is 4.45 feet above the floor of the basin. Soil testing at DP1 near the filtration basin found that the estimated seasonal groundwater would be at a depth of 45 inches, 3.8 feet below the ground surface. And boulders of at 31 inches below the ground surface. In the stormwater report, an explanation was provided relative to the groundwater depth at the infiltration basin that relied on an assumption that the groundwater elevation is between 745.25 feet and approximately 748.4 feet. In GEI's experience, such an assumption is not usually applicable to glacial fill soils, unless determined otherwise by soil testing at the infiltration business basin. No less than two test holes, in parentheses. The design of the infiltration basin does not meet Mass. TEP's requirement at the of at least two feet of vertical offset from seasonal groundwater, high groundwater. Furthermore, if constructed as proposed, the basin will have standing water at the lowest point of the outlet control structure during periods of high seasonal groundwater, resulting in limited storage volume being available for a storm event. On sheet one, there are several obstructions inhibiting access to the infiltration basin. Basin. Additional access needs to be provided to maintain the infiltration basin. Sixteen, the outlet pipe from the infiltration basin will direct stormwater northeasterly to the easternmost depression identified by the closed 742 topographic contour, which is located at the, on the abutting property. Consideration should be given to redirecting the outlet pipe to the northerly direction to the northerly depression, also identified by the closed 240, 242 topographic contour. Less than one half of the depression is located on the applicant's property. And then, and the general engineering comments. Seventeen, during my site visit, I checked site distances at the proposed exit. Site distance for drivers looking left to the east. As several obstructions of large diameter trees, the plans need to address sight line availability and any sightline improvements needed. On sheet 18, on sheet one, there is an incomplete top of the wall elevation identified as plus minus XXX point XX for the suddenly section of the wall that needs to be updated. Nineteen, on section five, the construction detail, section A, shows that the side slopes of the swell to be three to one, whereas sheet two, the corresponding side slopes are shown to be two to one. Construction detail in the plans need to be coordinated with each other. Likewise, the section B construction detail also needs to be updated. Under general comments, 20, the plans propose earth excavation and the construction of the berm to divert stormwater and associated tree removal in the Stafford Street right-of-way. The excavation will be up to approximately four feet deep. If not already done, the planning board may wish to solicit comments from DPW, which I had read previously anyway. GEI understands that any work in a public right-of-way requires the approval of DPW. Twenty-one, on second, on sheet two, there is a leader on the northern side of the site for prop riprap line diversion swell that is not significantly a swell area that should be deleted to prevent confusion. On 22, on sheet five, general note nine, needs to be revised to reference the Town of Oxford instead of the Town of Sterling. Twenty-three, GEI did not receive the plans for compliance to 310 CMI 10.00, nor for compliance to any federal wetland regulations. We trust that this letter addresses your review requirements. Feel free to contact the office if you need to have any questions. And that's from Jeffrey, Jeffrey Walsh. So that's everything I've received on this particular project. And now with the the engineer like to discuss the the plans?
Good evening. Carl Holgren, Quinn Engineering, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thanks for going through that. If I could add one thing, you guys should have received an email from Elizabeth Sullivan as well. She lives at 1178 Stafford Street, supporting the project as well. If you don't have it, I can get it to you, but just wanted to let you know that seems to be, it should be in the file.
I have it in my file, Carl.
Okay, very good. Do you guys mind if I share my screen?
Not at all.
It's telling me it's disabled.
I can make you a co-host and then you should be able to.
Go ahead. Going to try something here. I'd like, I'd like you to walk us through this. This is kind of a complex project.
There you go. Can you see that? Yep. Excellent. Okay. So the property is located on the north side of Stafford Street across from Hydro Cutter. Tom Gravel from Hydro Cutter is on the calls tonight as well. Property is located in the general business district, Dan's, little over lake, 11 acres and about 550 feet of frontage on Stafford Street. Stafford Street's on the bottom of the sheet here on the plan. And if you can see my cursor, that's Stafford Street right there. So the applicant was to construct four storage buildings in the property. A special permit and site plan approval are required because storage isn't listed in the use table in the bylaw specifically. So it falls under the quote, all under industrial, non-industrial uses found consistent with the intent of this chapter. So we've requested an application for a special permit, I mean, approval of a special permit and site plan approval. And because the work results in more than 10,000 square feet of disturbance, we've also submitted an application for a land disturbance permit and a stormwater management permit. Four buildings, you can see them here on the plan. Those buildings will be divided into multiple compartments and rented to individuals for storage of personal items. It's typical self-store facility. Typically, a renter will place items in storage and periodically return to the site to either retrieve the items or place additional items in storage. This is not a use where each rented unit will generate yearly vehicle trips. It's more of a use that will generate vehicle trips on like a monthly or even like a yearly basis, just when people come back to the storage unit, either drop stuff off or pick stuff up. So we've got access proposed from Stafford Street. You can see that here, if you can see my cursor. We've got what we call the upper building, which is the one that's perpendicular to Stafford Street here. And we've got three lower buildings, which are the ones that are parallel to Stafford Street. And those are the ones there with my cursor on them. The access around the upper building is supposed to be paved and there's a driveway that slopes down to the lower portion of the site that's also supposed to be paved. We've got gravel proposed around the lower storage buildings, and that's in order to reduce the impervious footprint of the project. The upper building is going to contain a small office. The office will be served by municipal sewer and private well. The upper building is the only one that's supposed to have an electrical service in it. The upper building will have cameras along the eastern side that point towards the lower buildings. The lower buildings will have solar lighting on the buildings, but no electrical services. We've got three parking spaces proposed at the office, which you can see here on my cursor. That includes one accessible space. The remainder of the site doesn't have any formal parking proposed, because typically renters just pull up to their unit, either pick up their stuff or drop their stuff off and then they leave. So it's not a long-term, they're not on the site for a long term and they're very, very frequently onsite. The lower, lower buildings have solar lighting, I mentioned that. Stormwater from the gravel area and the paved area is going to be collected by a series of swales, and it basically encompasses the paved area and the gravel area. So the runoff will go around the buildings and eventually flow into this infiltration basin here, which you see in sort of a tannish color. And so the basin is where we do our detention and treatment of runoff. And then the grass swales are just, it's a conveyance measure, but it also provides good treatment of the runoff, because basically, if you can picture runoff flowing through, you know, a couple hundred feet of a grass channel, it's going to collect a lot of the, it's going to capture a lot of the runoff sedimentation. So just for reference, the a butter that submitted an email, Elizabeth Sullivan, she lives at 1178, which is the building, you see just on the left side of the page here. So she's the one that'd be closest to the, the upper building, quote unquote, upper building. The Conservation Commission issued a negative determination back in October, confirming that there are no jurisdictional resource areas on site. As you mentioned, we have DPW comments. I spoke to Jared today, and I think we can resolve all of his comments. Also received a memo from Graves Engineering late this afternoon. Obviously, I haven't had a chance to respond to those comments, but I believe they can be resolved. I'd like to say Tom is very eager to start working on the project. If there's any way we can expedite the process and close the meetings quickly as possible, Tom, I'd really appreciate it. I understand there's outstanding review comments. And obviously, anytime we close a meeting and something gets changed, we have to come back to the board for modification of site plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions the board might have?
I have a quick question, Richard.
Yep.
Are you proposing a chain link fence around the entire storage area?
There will be a chain link fence.
Okay. I don't, I was just looking for it on the plan. I don't think I saw. Okay, I don't, I was just looking for it on the plan. I don't think I saw it, so I don't know. Obviously I missed it. Um. It's just my opinion. It seems like, uh. Seems like a lot of work to do and, uh. Probably, in my opinion, uh. Doing any kind of like approval tonight probably wouldn't be a good idea, but everything that needs to be done.
Rich, I just have one quick question also. Is there a maintenance plan on this detention basin anywhere? I didn't see anything.
There is. It's, uh, it's on the. I'll switch my plans here.
Yeah.
It should be, it should be on the, um, the last sheet of the. It's a, uh, like a, a written maintenance plan.
I mean, I see the type of the filtration and stuff like that. I just don't see an actual maintenance. Man, I mean, unless it's. Unless it's all in that small little general information, uh, general notes.
It, it's all note form and let's see.
I'm looking at that page, uh, the top left-hand corner of that page. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's on sheet four.
Okay.
Left-hand side.
All right. And I just can't read that fine, fine of printed.
We're getting the, the plans are way too small for us to even.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I mean, even on that, I couldn't tell what was, was written on that.
Yeah, one of them says sediment for bay maintenance.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
Yeah. So it basically goes through and it outlines the, the inspection requirements, the maintenance requirements. What to do if you find something that's needs to be fixed, that kind of stuff. And then record keeping, just as you make a log of what you did and when you did it, that kind of stuff.
How are you going to access that detention basin?
Yeah, we're going to provide an access from within the site. From the, the lower, um, gravel area, like a drivable vehicle access.
Carl, has the fire department seen this? I, I was at the tech review meeting and. They didn't really have any questions. They just wanted to make sure that they saw the plan so they felt comfortable with access. So. Has that been, uh, have you gotten their approval or anything? Or have they seen the plan?
Yeah. So, um, that's actually a great question. Uh, Tom met with, uh, the fire department. I want to say like maybe a month, maybe two months ago, showed him the plan. When he went down to the fire station personally, um, and from what I understand, they were okay with the layout. I haven't seen any comments or anything like that from them, but that, that's what I heard from Tom.
That is correct. Uh, I did go down and, and meet with them. Um. The state requirement is only twenty feet wide of road access. And on the plan, I believe we got, um. Basically twenty-four to twenty-five feet around all with the exception of right along the base of that hill. I, I shrunk it down to twenty feet. Um, and the state requirement is only access to three sides of the buildings and we have access to all four.
Now, I, I normally when we get a situation like this, if there's just a couple of issues, we approve the plan. With conditions, but the follow-up with Craig said, there are so many things that have to be fixed on this plan. Carl, how soon do you think you can take care of those issues? I mean, could something do the next two weeks?
I'd like to, I'd hope so, yeah.
Because I, I would like to see, you know, those, those things done. Again, if it was two or three things. With the permission of the chairman, a lot of times we say, okay, but they're just, I mean, I'm hearing all kinds of things. Uh, that, and they don't seem to be major issues, but there are issues. So if you could, uh, and then this is my suggestion, if you could get that done as soon as possible. If you could get it done within two weeks and all these things are worked out, then I think we'd be good to go. But I, I just think there's too many issues. For us to list all those conditions and, and, and get this approved. So.
That's fair. And to give you my, my two cents, I think they're all manageable comments. I don't think there's any showstoppers.
All right, yeah.
I appreciate, I appreciate anything you guys can do.
I, I would, uh, again, through the chairman, I'd like to see those rectified both from Graves and, uh, the DPW and. Let's get this project going. I have one other thing. Jeff, you had a question at the last meeting about the number of parking spaces.
Right.
And I, I think Carl explained that tonight that.
Yeah.
People in the park in front of their unit that they're.
Yeah, I, I, I had no point. Like I said, it's not like people aren't staying there for three hours and, uh, yeah, I have no problem.
I just want to, because if they go and address all these other things, I don't want them to come back and say, well, now you need more parking. You know, you can't hear them come back and get this thing, you know, get this, get this wrapped up. But, uh, that's my two cents. Thank you, Rich.
All right. I don't see Tony, but I'd like Tony to share his comments that he put on our, uh.
Yeah.
Staff comments here.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in essence, I was, um, this is prior to receiving our peer reviewers' comments. Um, but in essence, I was summarizing the comments received earlier from DPW. Um, would also, um, add further and Carl happy to follow up with you, um, anytime this week. Um, but I was just curious with respect to the actual building height, the sizes of the, of the doors to each of the units. Um, exactly how many units we're looking at, the location of signage. Dumpster, if there's any dumpsters here, uh, where exactly they would be. And, um, and also to echo a comment earlier to understand exactly where the, um, the fencing is going and what type exactly. Uh, fencing are we talking about? Um, and also that, um, you mentioned, uh, access to the, um. To the retention area. So to show that in an updated plan as well. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm, I'm talking, I'm, I'm going back to one of the things you wrote on there, Tony, that the gra- gravel, gravel, gravel surfaces shall be paved throughout the property. Okay, they got a lot of gravel. Okay, the whole bottom area is all gravel. Now we've got some comments about maybe on the easterly side, they should. From Graves talking about it, maybe it should be paved over there. I'm just wondering because I have seen these facilities that just use gravel. They don't, they don't have any. Any, uh, pavement around these type of buildings.
Sure. Um, comment to that was, was in essence, um. Curious to, to understand now, maybe gravel would be su- suitable. Um, but, um. You know, my understanding of, of transporting, um. Items, boxes out of the trucks, vehicles, granted, this might be a pull-up to a garage, but. If, um, if someone has a, a dolly or even in terms of accessibility, frankly, um, having gravel surface could be a challenge. So. I'd be curious if that, if the, uh, the applicant had, um, any further comment on that. But, um, but in essence, you know, I've, I've, I've seen them essentially paved and I totally understand the, uh, the importance of having. Uh, poor, porous surface versus impervious, but, um. You know, it could be, could be something to talk about with respect to access.
I would assume that they change their calculations for the stormwater runoff and stuff like that. If that whole area is paved.
Correct, they would change it. So just to back up a couple of steps in terms of accessibility, the, what we're calling the upper building, it's paved all the way around. So. That could be easily rented to somebody with accessibility issues or wheelchairs or anything like that. With respect to the lower buildings where it's just gravel. The idea there is, yeah, we want to reduce the impervious footprint. We don't want to pave, you know, the whole site. Which typically is, is a good thing, you know, we don't, you know, less pavement, the better. There's going to be, there's going to be maintenance that goes along with gravel between the buildings. Um, in terms of stormwater, like I mentioned before, there's hundreds and hundreds of feet of. Swales that are in place here with check dams and them to slowly runoff down so that there's not a huge sediment load going to the basin. I think, I think the swales will actually collect a majority of that sediment before it reaches the basin itself. So it's, that's my thoughts on that. And like I said, just to pave the whole site. I think it'd be, I think it'd be overkill and I don't think Tom's looking to do that.
And, and again, somebody renting those units is going to see that and either they're going to. Say it's a negative or they're going to say, well, you know, we can live with using, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the person renting the. Units issue.
That's true, Jeff. That, if, if people don't have accessibility, they're not going to rent it. So that's up to them.
All right. Yeah. So once, you know, I said, the, the less runoff and stuff like that, I'm all in favor of that. And again, if, if I was renting a storage unit and I couldn't. Access to it because it's all gravel, I couldn't get a dolly going, I probably wouldn't rent it.
I got one other thing, Tony, just for the record, could you get a memo from the fire department, uh, telling us that they're okay with the plan too for accessibility? Just so we can have it on file, because you don't want something to happen years down the road and they say, you know, we didn't know about it. So it's always good to have something in the file saying, you know, we're all okay as far as accessibility.
One percent is the grade of that drop from the top buildings to those other three, you know? Grades are very much an issue of the, uh, fire department.
Yep. So it's, it's a, it's about a nine percent grade.
That's pretty steep. They don't want any more than eight from what I'm hearing.
Yeah. That is steep.
That's a number.
That is steep.
Anyway, I agree with what Norman said. We need some confirmation from the fire department. But I also, I'm concerned about, I'm also concerned about the, uh, DPW. Thinking you guys are very close to there right away with these steep drop-offs and anything else you're designing into this plan. It's, it's like.
But like I mentioned, I spoke to Jared today and we can, we can push that grading outside the, the right of way. It's not an issue. Uh, there is one area where we are going to be doing some earthwork in the right of way. It's, um, if you can see my cursor, this area right here. Sort of a knob on the side of the road. Where the, the existing grade slopes up about four or five feet from the edge of the pavement and then slopes right back down once it gets on to Tom's property. So we're just going to basically level that out. So it's a. Almost even with the road as you go down the road. Uh, but I think that's going to be the only real grading going, going on in the right of way. We might do some other grading just at the driveway and whatnot for access.
So take a look, take a look at your site distances. If you've got to cut down a tree, you know, you may have to, because I, I look at those trees, they go right along the right of way.
Yeah. So that's the thing.
I could see that access issue there.
Yep. And so, uh, Tom, Tom's looking to maybe cut down some of those trees as well. Um, obviously anything he cuts down, he's going to. Review with the tree warden. But he's putting solar panels on top of the roofs of these buildings is a, is an option. And so that being the southern end of the site. Removing some of those trees might be useful for that, for that effort. Like I said, anything he removes is going to get permission before he goes, cuts it down.
We need a thumbs up from, uh, Jared and a thumbs up from Graves and we should be all set.
Address all those issues, redo the plan and come see us in two weeks. Yeah. Or is it three weeks this time?
I think it might be three.
Yeah, I think it's three. So you've got another week.
Yep.
Hello? I'd like to say something.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I live at eleven sixty-three, right across from, I guess, where the basin's going in. And I have some concerns about how this might affect my well. With all of the, the water source being disrupted. Um, and also I have questions about. I'm kind of level with what's the swamp right now. I don't get water in my cellar. Is this going to drain into the swamp? This basin or whatever is right across the street. Is this going to raise the water level, um, at this point?
I don't know. I like, I like, uh, Carl, uh, address your issues there. Go ahead, Carl.
Sure, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. Um, so with respect to the well, um, our basin is. I would say least couple hundred feet away from your well. So there's minimum separation requirements, which we meet for that. Some terms of water quality, it shouldn't impact it. In terms of water going to that depressed area. Um, we designed our system so that we reduce both the runoff rates and the volumes. So that, and actually Graves Engineering commented on that. It's one of their, one of their comments. Comment number twelve in their memo. Um, so we actually typically the standards reduce runoff volume, uh, runoff rates. But we actually do the volumes as well. And that's why our basin is, is the way it is so that we can do that, so that there's no increase in, in runoff quantity or rates to that depressed area.
Okay. So I don't need to worry about my basement. So as far as my well is concerned, if the well is fouled, um, or. I lose my water source because it comes down the hill deep. It's an artesian well. Um, those trees kind of. I guess hold some of it back, but. I, I don't know.
You've got an artesian well. Those usually go in the ground several hundred feet deep.
Understood, but I don't know where it's fed from. I don't know where the.
It goes through, yeah, it goes through, it goes through the ground, through the, uh, you know, ledge, whatever's down there, you know?
Understand that part. So. Is there any recourse if this changes any of the waterways?
Well, it's not really meant to change waterways. It's just trying to contain the water in the way it leaves the site. That's basically what it's doing.
That's.
It's trying to retain as much water on site too as possible. He's saying the runoff is going to reduce. It's going to sink into the ground in this area instead of running down into that swamp.
And as far as the materials and stuff, there was some talk, there was, um. There were some notes about. Waste materials. Is this just under, during the construction they're talking about? There was notes.
Well, I, I think, I think a third party, uh. Sorry, right now there's a bunch of steel on this property. Maybe you wondered where that was going to go. That's, that's. I, I think, I think this is, I don't think there's going to be any steel over there. I, I'm not sure. I'll leave that up to the engineer again.
I'm not worried too much about steel. I'm worried. I, I don't, I didn't know if this was, um, rental storage. Or if this is hydro cut that's storing their own things here. I don't know what type of materials or.
They're rental units.
Just rental units. Okay. That answers that question. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else from the public? I see another gentleman up there. No?
No, you answered my questions that I've thought of. They've been answered in the talking. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Well, I think we have to continue this for three weeks for, for our, uh, April. What's the date, Mary?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Yes.
Okay. What do we got going on April twelfth?
I do have one more question. Is there a contact? Someplace I can send an email or whatever, if I come up with more questions. I kind of found out about this last minute that I could get on the Zoom. And it filled with my questions, so I didn't have a lot of time and I didn't think about it a lot yet.
All right. Linda, you can call us at the office. It's five oh eight. Nine eight seven six zero four five.
Okay.
Okay.
So Mary, what do we got going on April?
We have quite a bit going on, on the twelfth. We've got all the, um, public hearings for. Zoning amendment.
The zoning articles, right?
Meeting. Yep. So I've got us booked all the way up to seven twenty-five so far.
All right. Well, let's make a, entertain a motion to, uh. Continue this public hearing till seven thirty on April twelfth.
Okay, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it. Rich, could I ask a question? Um, so. How many, is it a special permit? Does that require only people at the public hearing can vote, correct? Or am I thinking of something else?
No.
All right. So just so you know, I won't be in the state on April twelfth. So I won't be here for the next ma- that meeting. And I don't know if, if that affects the number of voters that, uh, members that you need at the public hearing or not.
We don't need a super majority, do we?
Do. You need a.
We do.
Party for a special permit. Yes.
Wow.
Two thirds.
Well, we got to make sure Christine and Dale read up on it and, uh, sign the paperwork so that they can vote on it then.
Yep. They can review a transcript or watch the video and they can send an affidavit.
We got to try to maintain that super majority there then. No.
But they don't have to be at the public hearing to vote?
They, they sign a, they sign a, uh. Affidavit saying that they. They did their homework. They, they read, they watched the thing and everything else. So.
Sounds good.
You know, you're not going to be around, Greg. You're not going to be around. We'll have to, we'll have to deal with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Rich, I got a question too.
Yeah.
So, so Carl, if there's an issue, you don't have all this resolved. I think you should let us know so we don't have to. You know, I mean, if all the issues aren't resolved, there's no sense of meeting again. I guess that's my.
Yeah, if, if for whatever reason something happens and I get COVID for the next two months or whatever, I'll, I'll let you know.
That sounds good.
Now, we want to address you at the next meeting, but I, I guess what Norman's. Now, we want to address you at the next meeting, but I, I guess what Norman's trying to say, if you're not ready to go, we're not gonna address you at the next meeting. It's gonna get continued again. If you know ahead of time, it just isn't gonna get done for the next meeting, then we can go ahead and schedule it for what? The, the twenty-fifth? No, no, the, the twenty-sixth.
Six.
The twenty-sixth of April. And I know the, I know you, you guys want to get going on this, but you know, we gotta make sure everything's taken care of too.
Yeah, I understand. And we're optimistic we can get things done. And if anything comes up for whatever reason, we'll let you know as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thanks, Rich.
All right. Any further discussion? All those voting in favor of continuing this public hearing till April twelfth at seven thirty PM? Say yes. We'll do a roll call. I say yes. Norman?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary Junosley. All right, for those that are here, okay? All right. Well, I thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Uh, you'll get another Zoom notification of our next meeting on, on the twelfth.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
Well, I'm trying to find my, uh, agenda. So, you know, it's not easy working from home like this.
No, it's not.
I, it just got buried in paperwork. I read all those things and now I can't find it. Oh, well, entertain a motion to, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, match eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Norman. Further discussion? If being none.
Mary, was I there?
Are you here tonight, Greg?
I can't find my minutes.
Yes, you were there.
All right. Never mind.
Everyone that's here was there, I believe.
No, it was.
You weren't, you weren't Roger, right? Roger didn't come in. He, he was too busy becoming a grandparent. Okay. I vote yes. Norman?
I vote yes.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Roger?
Stain.
Gary? All right, Mary, help me out. What's next?
I got, I got it right here, Rich. It's, uh, Brown Road. It's, can you receive?
Oh, yeah. Fifty-one Brown Road. No, no. Fifty-one Brown Road. The applicant is looking for a certificate of completion. When, when they know it isn't complete. I'm kind of, I'm kind of interested on why they think they need a certificate of completion when they're not complete.
That's an easy one.
So my attitude is, okay, we'll, we'll give them another continue way, uh, temporary till they get it complete. What'd you say, uh, that Tony, sixty days is enough?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. So, um, a field, uh, field visit report from Quinn Engineering on March fourth, twenty twenty-one. Um, took some, uh, they took some notes. It's been provided in the packet, uh, as indicated. Uh, work has been substantially completed. Um, but they noted that it was necessary that the basin and slopes be restored before lumen seed are placed. Um, building commissioner recommends a sixty day temporary occupancy. The work is still incomplete due to earlier weather conditions.
Okay, entertain a motion to notify the building inspector to give him a, a sixty day temporary occupancy permit for sixty days.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? If being none, I was voting, I'll, I'll vote yes. Norman?
I'll abstain.
Jeff?
I'll vote yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Carrie? Okay. Next, I need.
Submission for Founder's Court.
Huh?
There's a submission for Founder's Court.
Yeah, I got it. Seven, what? Application for stormwater management land disturbance permit applicant Ronald Caldwell. Junior. Leveling out his backyard and creating a usable yard space. You know, all well and good, except it affected the, uh, stormwater runoff. Hey, I got questions about this, uh, submission. We know it probably affected stormwater runoff. Is someone doing something to calculate stormwater runoff or is this, or is the DPW gonna handle everything? Tony, you there?
Yes, I am. So I will have to follow up with Jared, um, with respect to, um, whether he, he feels, you know, this needs to be reviewed from outside. I, I will touch base with him, um, on that tomorrow.
So, sorry. Mary, did we get the application for that?
You should have. Yes.
Yep. Yeah.
It was, um, if I may, there was a basic, um, rendering provided and, um, we, we will need more information from, from the applicant. So.
Yeah, you gotta tie it back to the stormwater system that was there to begin with.
I guess my question is the work.
What this change is gonna do?
Has the work, I haven't started on this? Has the work been done?
The work's done, but I mean, bottom line is is someone in deep trouble because of what they did.
Right. This, this is.
And who's gonna calculate that to find out?
Yes. Um, and if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, Chairman, so the work was done without town approval. Um, reading Jared's notes here, the disturbance area looks to be between a thousand square feet to ten thousand, um, perhaps even five thousand square feet. Also drains to the abutting property and has a significant slope of greater than ten percent. Uh, further, the owner cleared several trees on the property and a large amount of fill was used to level off sections of the, of the backyard. Um, I know that the new property owner has, uh, Jared has met with, uh, the gentleman on site. And, uh, the property owner has stated that he'll work with DPW to correct the issues.
I need more in writing on that before we can give approval to anything they doing there. I mean, I number one, there's a baseline of what was there to begin with. They go back to the old topography of what that lot looked like and now what they've just done. There's gotta be a ramification for that. It's draining to a buddy's property. Someone's gotta protect that abutment now.
So Rich threw you a tone. So that's the issue, Tony. They filled it in and now water's going on to your buddy's property? That's why this is an issue? Tony?
Uh, yes. So they, if the, the abutter notified us, um, and, um, DPW went out there. Um, I have spoken to the, the abutters, the abutter in the back of the property. Um, and, and he does have concerns about, although he, last I spoke to him was back in February. Um, he has concerns about future runoff. Um, although I don't have any comment with respect to the current situation in his backyard. Um, but he was concerned that there was a significant amount of fill brought in. Um, and, and also there was several trees that were cut, um, along the edge of the property. And so with all of that earthwork done, um, he's, he's very concerned, um, of the impacts this, this could have. And certainly with, um, DPW going out there and reviewing it, um, there will have to be measures to, um, to correct it. And, um, to get a better understanding too, um, there's certainly deliveries was noted, the landscaping company that went out there. Um, there should be slips for all that fill. Um, and, and certainly, um, someone's gonna have to do, provide us with an analysis of what was existing and what was actually done in terms of the scope of work and, um, anything that was, was placed underground too as well. So to, so we, we're going to need that information further. Um, for tonight, this, basically they submitted a, a basic filing. Um, they were looking for scheduling potentially a public hearing. Um, for, uh, for this project and we will be getting comments prior to the public hearing from DPW.
Thank you.
Up to you, Tony. Do you think we should have accepted? Accepted tonight? Cause that's, that's the clock ticking and, uh.
Well, how much time do we have once the clock is ticking?
Sixty-five days for stormwater and land disturbance.
And you're saying we gotta.
I, I just. This gets back to, uh, I mean, the, the work has been done and now it's gonna be undone somehow. And there's no plan showing that. I don't know how. We have nothing in front of us that shows what exactly is gonna be done. You know, it says, you know, level the backyard and install a clean fill, create usable yard space.
Well, I think we can, we can request that uh, the applicant work with Jared to
Yeah.
get some better, better drawings, better.
Actually, we can actually, I mean, there's, there's, I got one little photograph in the back there, but it doesn't really show. You know?
I, I would think that the scope of the work that was done, it had to be more of a technical drawing than what.
Than that, but.
Provided in the application.
Can, um, can I, can I just say that this could be just a guy trying to flatten out his backyard?
Yeah.
Cut down some trees. I mean, Jared says what? Says it could be a thousand square feet, could be five thousand square feet, could be ten thousand square feet. I mean, we really don't know. So maybe we should just get more information. You know, before we run this guy out on a rail in town or something like that, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna run him out. I'd just like to see a, a better drawing of the scope of what he's actually trying to do.
See, but I got a question because I thought if it was less than five thousand square feet or whatever it is, unless it's got a ten percent slope, if it goes into a storm drain into the town or something else, they don't have to file with us. So that's why I asked the question. What's the issue? I'm falling off of what Craig's saying. I mean, the guy filled in, he cut some trees. You can cut trees. The guy filled in his backyard.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's less than a, it, I mean, there's a big difference between a thousand feet and ten thousand feet. Now, if he created a nuisance and all this water's going on his neighbor, okay, that's one thing. But I mean, our bylaw says if you just serve less than whatever it was, and he's lower than that, they don't have to do anything.
But saying.
Unless, unless he's flooding someone else out. The guy cut some trees. So what? People cut trees in their backyard all the time.
But no, what if he filled it?
Did you guys see the, um, the, uh, the picture that's on the back of the packet?
Yeah, it's an elevated pad, basically.
Yeah. I mean, is that, is that really illustrative of what they did?
I think so. I mean, I, I don't know where it came from.
But what if he had a swell?
Cause if you, if you take a look at, uh, if you take a look at Google Maps where they give you a street view, there's a lot of fill that went in there. Um, because if, if you look at, if you look at the profile of that, it looks like, it, it looks like it's about six or eight feet higher.
Doesn't? Again, if he's creating a nuisance for his neighbor, that's, that's why I asked the question. But I kind of agree with Craig. I'd like to get more information as to actually what happened before we go out. I mean, maybe the guy was totally wrong, but think of it. If you had a hole in your backyard and you had some trees and it was a thousand square feet, which is less than the bylaw, you're gonna cut the trees down and fill it in. Now, if you're creating a nuisance for your neighbor, and again, that's why I asked the question. What's the issue here? I would like to get, before we do any public hearing or anything, I'd like to get some more information from Jared. Because there's a big difference between a thousand square feet and ten thousand square feet.
Saying five thousand. He, he finally concluded five thousand.
I, I'd like to get more information.
My question, what if he, what if that was part of his stormwater? What, what if there was a, we don't know.
Well, we need more information. That's why I think, I would like more information before I schedule a public hearing.
Yeah. Hey, Tony, this is, this is. This is a, this is a fairly new subdivision. There has to be plans at the town hall, a founder's court.
Yes, there are.
And, and the topography that was there.
Existing, right?
Okay.
And what was there?
And Rich, if you.
Then you gotta go from what was there, what there is now. But, but Norman, that was part of a stormwater issue there. Maybe that swell was to direct it away from these.
Absolutely.
That's what I, that's, uh, that was my point. Let me finish. If he filled in the swell area, that's a whole different ballgame. And again, that's why I asked the question and that's why I'd like to get more information. If the guy came in and filled in his swell area that he, you know, based on the plan that he submitted to handle stormwater, yeah, now actually he's, he's got big problem. Okay. But we don't know that yet. So I'd like to just get a little more information. That's all.
Can I say something, please?
Sure.
Um, so Jared did go to the property and look at it and made a determination that whatever the guy did met the, um, um, eligibility requirements for stormwater. So it was Jared's suggestion that the applicant submitted his.
So what was the comment about it might be a thousand, it might be four thousand, it might be ten thousand? Who said that?
Yes. Um, so that came from a communication I received from Jared. Um, disturbance area looks to be between a thousand square feet to ten thousand. And then he notes in parentheses, uh, in a communication to me that perhaps even over five thousand, but it does note that the slope is greater than ten percent.
Well, so, but he's gotta do two of the three issues. So if he, if he filled in more than five thousand, it's a ten percent slope. That's fine. That's fine. But I, I don't think we were told that upfront. And, and Mary, you just, I mean, if Jared went out and made that determination that he meets the criteria, then that's fine. But I, I, I don't think we were told that upfront. I think we just more or less say, well, it's a thousand, ten thousand. We didn't know what the slope was, but if, if he meets the criteria, that's good enough for me and that's the information that I need.
And it sounds like the homeowner wants to work with Jared to, to fix it. So maybe we just let him try to fix it.
I, it's gonna.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just want to make sure the stormwater that was on those original lots was was not disturbed by doing this.
Yeah.
It get back, it gets back to, we talked about at the last meeting. Let's Jared work this out. Come back and tell us what he's, what he wants to do. Cause again, we wait for his comment all the time. None of us are on his board are gonna say anything until we get the word from Jared. So I agree with Craig. I'd like to have Jared go work at this, come back with a solution and then we go from there. We may not even need a public hearing. The guys willing to do what Jared says and make sure that that water doesn't run on a neighbor's land, then they worked it out.
Well, it sounds like to me Jared wants this guy to, uh, submit a, uh, stormwater management permit.
And that's fine. That's what he wants to do.
Do it on his own. This guy didn't do it on his own. He was directed to.
Yep.
Right. He was.
And we're not gonna get any more information until the public hearing. So I'm willing to go. I, we, you know, everything's taken care of to do it, right? Got your filing fee, Mary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's just do it and schedule it for the second meeting in, uh, April twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth? Okay.
What do we got on that?
Can I make, can I make a request?
Yeah.
That we get info from Jared before the twenty-sixth that he's worked it out and we know what the guy's gonna do. I don't wanna have a public hearing and get a list of all the complaints.
Right.
Say, all right, we gotta wait for Jared. Let him work it out with Jared before he gets here and then we can approve it. Yeah. That's my request.
And also, Tony, if you can look up what, what was there existing before, if this is this, if there's an existing site plan of that lot and what was actually there before he did this work.
Yes, no, I, I, I will, I will, um, I, I will. And through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, um, comments, I, I'll, I'll, I'll work closely with Jared. Uh, comments to be provided prior to the public hearing to the board. Um, and, um, you know, with whatever remedies we, we, we need to be done. Um, and it is noted, we'll know again that the property owner has been, um, responsive, uh, and, and wants to cooperate with, uh, with the town on this.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay. Just knowing it's such a new subdivision, there had to be stormwater management done on it. So if there was some structures on, in his backyard that he didn't like, and now they're filled in, we, we should know that. We should know what it was, what it was doing for the whole system. And that, that has to be replaced somehow.
Absolutely.
Yes, uh, duly noted. Yep.
Okay. So entertain a motion to accept this submission for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. And, uh, schedule a public hearing for April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one at?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five PM.
I'll make that motion, Rich.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Okay. Well, I vote yes. Well, I vote yes. Norman?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yeah.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Gary unanimously. Okay. Yes, I guess we're down to the uh planning director report.
This will be very quick. So uh, two, two items. Uh, we'll be doing a. A follow-up site visit with uh Eastland um along with uh our DPW director um later this week. Um, so, um, so I'll be reporting back to you at the next meeting, status of that project. And also um last week, Mary, myself, Jared, uh Judy and our, and the town's consultant. Working on the stormwater bylaw. Um, we met last week and we'll be following up this week on proposed. Language, although not uh through zoning, um, but through our municipal town bylaws. Um, they are working on a finalized draft, which we'd certainly share um with, with our board here. That's all that I have for this meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any old business? Nothing? Okay.
And I will make a motion. We adjourn, Rich.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeff. I vote yes. Norman?
I vote yes.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg?
I vote yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Well, it was great. Got an extra week before our next meeting, so.
All right, I can't wait.